...of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at Bartle School, 435 Mansfield Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Israel, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Versa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz? Ms. Bowe?
Here.
Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman? Mr. Wharton? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to recess to executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Israel, could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz? Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman? Mr. Wharton? All right, we'll be back eight, eight fifteen at the latest. Thank you. To reconvene into public session?
So moved.
Second.
So Catherine moved it, Jerry, second. Israel, we need a roll call. Ms. Versa?
Here.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Should we do that again?
Here, yes.
Here, yes. Israel, are there any communications? No. Tim?
I guess since the last meeting, the only thing to report is that we had a great graduation ceremony. It was beautiful weather and just a really exciting event for all the graduates.
I just want to clarify, it's not true there were no communications. We had plenty of emails between the last meeting and this meeting.
Okay.
I didn't hear what you said.
Just saying, Israel said there were no communications since the last meeting. I mean, he might not get them all because Linda gets them, but there were emails and communications between the last meeting and this meeting.
For the curriculum committee report, Ashley's not here and...
Claire's not here.
Claire's not here. So I will do the curriculum committee report. The curriculum committee did not meet today. We have two items on the agenda and that's it. Finance?
The finance committee did not meet today. The only thing I would bring your attention to is item number two, which we received an email from Suzie Wolkowitz regarding the Saferids to School project. We'll approve the resolution which is required as part of the grant submittal process. But this is for, I think, a lighted crosswalk on South Fifth, right near Bartle, near the new police station.
It would be like the one that's at the middle school entrance, is that right?
I don't know. I haven't talked to Suzie. I just got the email and I just, all I know is what she wrote.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on the finance items? Ann, personnel?
Personnel committee did not meet tonight. On the agenda tonight is the appointment of Mike Lassiter as the principal of the high school and the transfer of a Bartle gym teacher to the role of guidance counselor and several other items, including the resignation of Nicole Adams. That's all.
Is there any discussion on the personnel items? I just want to wish Nicole the best of luck. She's going to be in Hackensack with our former assistant superintendent and I'm sure that she'll do an excellent job up there. Any other discussion on those items? Okay, policies? Ann, you want to do the policy committee report?
Policy committee did not meet tonight and there is...
Nothing.
No items on the agenda.
Okay. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. I'd like to make a motion to limit each public comment to three minutes. Is there...
Second.
Israel, could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Seeing that there's no public comment at this time, we would like to move the curriculum and instruction.
I think there might have been confusion. I think everyone was waiting for you to say...
Oh, okay. Yeah, please, no.
Oh.
I actually, I welcomed folks, but please, if you come in, is there a sign-in sheet, When you sign in, please state your name and your address and do the same in the ledger.
Kimberly Bevelock-Lucrent, speaking as Highland Park Education Association President. I would like to read some statements for you regarding the departure of Nicole Adams and the resignation. The staff is devastated. I stood up here at a board meeting several months ago to put forth a positive comment about personnel since we had been making some negative ones and Nicole was the focus of that comment. There was not a single person who had anything negative to say about her leadership. So I'm going to read a few things for you that the staff has put together. And they are standing out of respect for Nicole. We, the Highland Park Middle School faculty, would like to publicly acknowledge the outstanding service of Nicole Adams during her time here in our district. Ms. Adams has been here a short time but has made a big impact in our middle school community. Her smile and positive spirit has made a difference for our students who have embraced Ms. Adams while still respecting the decisions and policies that she enforces. The staff appreciates her caring attitude and her professional leadership that has made it a pleasure to work with her. Ms. Adams was a positive, active, and visible presence. She will be missed. And this is a collective statement from middle and high school. It is not every day that an administrator comes into a district and has such a profound impact on students and staff, especially in their first year. Ms. Nicole Adams is a phenomenal administrator. She shows compassion for our students and their needs while still enforcing the rules and the procedures justly. Ms. Adams has earned the respect and admiration of the students and the staff by the caring nature she shows each and every day. She has served as a positive role model for all students in Highland Park. All of her students are held to the same high standards. Her deep connection and rapport with the student body have motivated children to do and be their very best in school. This has been a challenging year for our staff and yet, as an administrator, Ms. Adams has continually inspired and supported us. She is a gifted orator and writer and uses these skills daily to acknowledge and affirm the accomplishments and hard work of our staff. Ms. Adams has attended almost every event at the middle and high school where she has sent the message to both staff and students that she cares about every aspect of their lives. Ms. Adams does this not because she has to, but because she truly enjoys spending time with the school community and her students. We are deeply saddened about Ms. Adams' resignation. Without her presence, all members of the school community will be at a significant loss. In this time of turmoil in our district, the absence of Nicole Adams is yet another example of the multiple turnover of administrators that is directly impacting our school's well-being. With the decision to move the middle school principal to the high school, every building in the district will now experience a loss in leadership. Circumstances dictate the reasons that administration and other educators continue to move on from our district. And they are moving on. They're moving on due to lack of support and communication. They're moving on because we're in turmoil, because we have problems that we have not managed to fix. Is this the plan? What is the plan? Because we've lost someone that was dear to us, that was an example of leadership that we trusted, that we respected, that we listened to, and she's leaving. And it's my understanding that if she were asked to stay, or she were offered a position to stay, or a different climate, or some communication, that she would stay. That's my opinion. And that's the opinion that I've been hearing. So what do we do with that? Someone that was a stronghold in our community when we need strongholds right now. Is this something that the board is okay with? Because this is going to continue without remediation. I would also like to read and close with a statement from a fourth grader. I've been up here before speaking about our student and staff support person, Barb Schimon, and the loss of her position in Bartle School when we have a new administrator coming in here as well. This seemed to be done without full understanding of what Barb did and does and what her schedule is and how vital she is to the running of Bartle School and how vital we feel she would be to an administrator coming in that we plan on supporting when they get here. This is from a fourth grader. Dear Ms. Schimon, thank you for being my gym teacher and helping me do a lot more than just gym teaching. Ran part of the school, I'm reading this verbatim, keeping the school non-chaotic school and teaching lifelong lesson to students. Sincerely. Clearly, this student understood what Barb Schimon did a lot better than the board when they decided to eliminate her position.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Kim Hammond and I just actually wanted to take a moment, seeing so many teachers out here this evening, to give a warm, generous thanks on behalf of my family and my children. I have three kids. I have a daughter who's at the Bartle School, a son in the middle school, and my daughter at the high school. And to the person, we have just been so fortunate over the years with such fabulous, dedicated teachers who have taken the time to figure out who my kids are and teach them and bring them along regardless of who they were and how, where they kind of started in their class. So it just seems like a really, I wanted to just take this opportunity, seeing so many of you all out there, to say thank you for all you do, especially at a time when clearly there are tensions and perhaps an overwhelming feeling of lack of appreciation. I want you to know, you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I'm going to be reading you a letter that I was going to send to...
Arlene, please introduce yourself.
Oh, Arlene Rosenfeld, 147 Exodus Street in Highland Park. I was going to send this letter and I stopped because I wanted to see what the board was going to do today. And forgive me because I'm very nervous when I speak in a microphone. So I'm going to read it to you and then I added something to it. And I, it took a lot to write this because you've gotten a lot of letters from me and I was very civil in my past letters, but this one I need to read. I am so baffled at your behavior for allowing the superintendent that you appointed to wreak havoc on our community. I am departing from civility in this letter to you. So now it's a speech. Since I'm so disheartened with your actions this past school year, when I heard that Nicole Adams, vice principal of the Highland Park High School and Middle School, resigned her position effective of June 30th, I was so dismayed. The faculty, students, and community have the highest respect for her. In the short time she has been in that position, as Kim has already said, she demonstrated her professionalism and deep respect for everyone. Her resignation is only one in a line of resignations and retirements of administrators in our district this past year. It is difficult to believe that these resignations were all voluntary. It is too coincidental. Initially, I thought that you mistakenly believed that Mr. Capone would do what would be beneficial for our school system. However, my opinion now has changed. Given all the harmful things he has done in the past school year and the community's response to those acts, I now believe your initial intent was in line with his. I am not naive enough to believe that our school system did not need improvement, but you, along with Mr. Capone, have made things worse. And I fear for the future of both our school system and community since the two are intertwined. And I would suggest that if you really think hard, you should offer Ms. Adams, Mrs. Adams' position as vice, as president, uh, principal, excuse me, principal of the middle school.
Denise May Fryer, 314 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. It's been a really, really awful year. This man has disrupted our community. This man has set the teachers' lives into misery. This man has made it miserable for all of us. He has wreaked havoc in our community. I like our community. I've said that several times. I don't like what he's done. I don't like that our teachers are not appreciated. Even the cronies he hired on board, like Ms. Callis, is gone. We've lost good people like Ms. Hagermull. We've lost good people like Ms. Frazier. We've lost good people like Ms. Ramona, whatever their reasons for retiring or leaving. It's really too coincidental. We're hemorrhaging people. I was told recently that some of the teachers are putting out resumes, they're writing, they're writing support letters for each other, recommendation letters for each other. They want that get the hell out of Dodge. I don't blame them. But I will be really sad if they leave because these teachers have made a really good impact on the lives of my kids. They really have. Everybody, from Mr. Lassiter to the Paris, to everybody, they have been good to the last man or woman. But you all have created such havoc here and such animosity and I don't know why. For the gap? For the gap, okay, for the gap. But it really, really doesn't come down to that because you could do this way differently. I don't think you are listening to this community at all. So going ahead, I want to know what supports you will have in place at each school for the staff in this really, really tumultuous time. Are there going to be any staffs? There's no stability. All the leadership has been evaporated, has gone, aside from Mr. Lassiter, who's now at the, at the high school. But still, there's no leadership in the middle school. And I really, really suggest you consider Ms. Adams, who I really like and who is well-liked by her staff and all these teachers here. I want to know what is going to be done to stop the hemorrhaging of our teachers, of our support staff, of these teachers who care about this community. Look how many of them are here! Doesn't this say anything to you, Mr. Ross? Mr. Capone? Uh, forget him. The rest of you. Forget him. This guy needs to be rubber-rouded. This guy got demoted in his past position. This guy is not good for our school district. This guy needs to go.
Jenny Chapman, 123 Magnolia Street. Am I supposed to put my address here?
Yes.
You know, it's kind of ironic, I guess, or whatever, hypocritical of me because I'm getting up here for the first time without something in front of me to read. But it sort of speaks to what's happening here. There's a lot of thought and planning that goes into structuring the classrooms for next year. And I've sat in these classrooms with these teachers and I can't ima, I can't believe what they do in a day. I can't, I can't believe what they do in a year. And so much work goes into this. And Ms. Frazier put so much work into this. And you have just said, "No, thanks," when you said, "Well, maybe we'll wait until August." Maybe. It takes a lot of time and effort and you know, well, maybe, you don't know, you don't have a lot of teaching experience, Mr. Capone, but they do. And they put a lot of work into this over the summer. It's important that you give them the classes that they put, that they already handed to you and give them their classroom assignments and let them do their work over the summer in a, in a way that respects their time and their level of experience. And I know, Mr. Soto, you have a lot of experience and you can speak to this and maybe you can guide him in this. It's really important that they have the summer to do this. And the other thing is that I, I'm hearing that Ms. Adams might be willing to come back. Are you crazy? Ask her. Just ask her, come on! It's that easy. Thank you.
I live at 348 Becker Street in Highland Park. I am a parent in the community. I am a teacher in the community and I am a community member. And this is the first time I'm speaking this year and I'm speaking from the entire middle school language arts department. To the Board of Education, we are speaking as the middle school language arts department as we are gravely concerned about the recent mandate for increased benchmark assessments for middle and high school students. Individual students who have been, I'm sorry, individuals who have been approved by this board to write benchmark assessments for all middle school and high school English Language Arts classes, were told to create five benchmarks per marking period: nonfiction, fiction, explanatory, expository, and argumentative, a total of 20 benchmarks per year. In addition, they must also write a minimum of two research assignments to benchmark progress. Benchmarks as per the directive must be solely skill-based and must not have any connection to content material taught throughout the course of the marking period. Additionally, summative assessments will be given at the end of each marking period, which will assess content knowledge and add an additional four assessments per year for a total of 24 formal assessments per English course. To be clear, these assessments are distinct from any regular quizzes or subject area tests. Aside from the benchmarks, English Language Arts teachers will be implementing a newly-designed curriculum which includes the following each eight to 10-week marking period: two whole-class novels, primarily within the New Lexile Stretch Band, a minimum of one independent novel, nonfiction texts, project-based learning, one per marking period, writing workshops, regular assessment of content literature. In addition to the above material, we have been instructed to set aside four weeks of class time during the first and fourth marking period for implementation of the Fontas and Penel Benchmark Reading Assessments. This is in addition to the above-mentioned benchmarks. Midterms and finals in the high school will also be administered. In May, state testing will be administered, as per the state. We are concerned about the stress such testing places on the children, ourselves, and our curriculum. Currently, there is an ongoing conversation about balancing schoolwork, homework, and testing in the community. We are concerned that excessive testing will replace true learning and be onerous for students. We are, however, excited to use data to inform our instruction and work hard with our students to inform our instruction through our use of benchmark and summative assessments. Just yesterday, we attended a full-day workshop, data-driven instruction, with Edward Albert EDD, who spoke of less being more. Albert, a superintendent in Pennsylvania, worked with us all day to develop meaningful benchmarks for our students. With great respect, we recommend the following as a way to move into data-driven instruction in a way which aligns teachers and students to the curriculum and the data in a manner which is open, data-informed, and progressive. We want to twine the use of data into our instruction. We do not want to test our children in an, in an unduly burdensome way. We are also greatly excited and grateful for the new texts and curriculum we received. In light of that, we recommend the following: one benchmark per quarter, which contains nonfiction and/or fictional texts, as well as one writing piece, either explanatory or argumentative; one optional summative per quarter. As per Edward Albert and many who use data-driven instruction, summatives can be benchmarks themselves. In other words, teachers may choose to use content-based material taught that marking period to be their benchmarks. Research can be handled by all content teachers through project-based learning and through the curriculum. Thank you for listening to our remarks. We urge you to integrate data-driven instruction in a manageable manner for both staff and students. Respectfully, the Highland Park Middle School Language Arts Department.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Oh, sorry.
So when all of this started sometime back in November, at least when I became informed of it, I took some time to sit down and write out some of my thoughts about how I could see this paralleling some of my experience in the private sector. I worked, worked, past tense, because the company's out of business, for manufacturing... I worked, worked, past tense because the company's out of business, for a manufacturing company in Zapprunzook, New Jersey. Started in 2001, and in 2008, they were taken over by another organization, who then proceeded to implement changes. And we started to see attrition of the qualified personnel who knew the business over the course of the next few years. And I stand here before you working at a new job because our company went out of business due to mismanagement. So I stand before you thinking that when you have, what is it, four administrators? We've lost either through retirement or five. That speaks to a real problem. At the same time I sat down to write all those things, I started thinking about it from how someone coming into the district would approach what was obviously a budgetary problem. Nine people were let go, which means dollars were an issue. I'm continuing to get concerned that the attrition that's being allowed to occur is so you can bring in lower-priced personnel who might not be as qualified as the ones who left. Be them teachers, because you're going to lose teachers through attrition going to other districts because they don't like what's going on here. And you're going to bring new teachers in who are new, not to say they're not qualified, but you're losing your core, your cadre, the people who know the district. They know everything about the kids here and how it all works. So I think you really need to think about that going forward because you're going to find yourself in six years possibly turned over and maybe in a bad place. So just think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
First, I just wanted to take a minute to--
Ellen, just state your name and address.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I wrote it. Ellen Liebowitz, 250 Grant Ave., Highland Park. I wanted to say congratulations to all the parents and students who are involved in either moving-up ceremonies or high school graduations. And I also wanted to congratulate the new student reps. I wish you well and may all your questions be answered. If you can read this, thank a teacher. Thank you, teachers. Thank you. I wanted to again comment about the search process for the high school principal. And I want to start off by saying that my comments have nothing to do with the candidate who's being put forth tonight. If Mr. Lassiter is approved, I'm confident that he will continue to serve the district very well. But as I mentioned in the last meeting, I'm very concerned about the way the search process was conducted and the way the administrative searches have been handled in general. I asked to be on the high school principal search committee for a few reasons. Because I care deeply about our town and our school district. Because I have a son who will be in the high school for three more years. Because I think my experience and skills would serve the committee well. And lastly, because I had concerns about things I had heard about the other recent administrative searches and I wanted to see for myself how the process was working. From all that has happened from when the committee met to tonight, it's left me with some questions about the process. Yes, indeed, it was the candidate the committee put forth that was recommended to the board. However, that was in the context of a flawed process. The three candidates that were put forward were rated based on the information we had at the time. One candidate was entirely unqualified. Two candidates were marginal at best. The candidate -- I'm sorry. The candidate being considered tonight is the one who could most easily and sensibly lead us to a decision to have one principal for two buildings, an arrangement that was clearly unpopular with the school district community and the Highland Park community as a whole. Again, this is not about Mr. Lassiter's skills or qualifications, but what about the middle school? What's the plan? Are we going to search for a middle school principal? And are we going to search for a middle school, high school, assistant principal? Just to switch gears a little bit, and I'll get back to those questions because I would like to know what the plan is. This past Monday morning, the day of graduation, I had to drop something off at the high school. It didn't feel like a building that was about to have a celebration. It felt more like I was walking into a wake. The students were sad. The teachers were sad. The mood was entirely dismal. And it was just so very upsetting to just be in the building. Dark, sad, concerned people. That's not what a school should feel like on the morning of its graduation. To say that students, staff, parents are upset about Ms. Adams leaving and many other things that have been going on related to the school district is putting it mildly. When the board met last April before the superintendent search, you gave the community an opportunity to share what we were looking for in a new superintendent. My list included some of these things. Expertise in building staff morale. Boy, have we failed there. Developing comprehensive K-12 curriculum writing and implementation. Well, the person that we hired wasn't exactly qualified to do that. Improved school-community communication. Grant writing. The hiring practices and procedures for new staff and administration. Staff development. I understand that the staff development, I don't know if it was today or yesterday, there was a little problem. We don't have to go into details. Excuse me?
Just if you could be--
Yeah, I'm the first person that you're saying that to, Mr. Ross.
Yes, and if you could just wrap your comments up.
I'm almost done. If somebody needs to give me three minutes, I'm sure any number of people will do that. Overall, I'm questioning the current leadership as it pertains to everything I talked about. Board members, I know that you all love our town and there are some of you that I adore. So it is really a mystery to me how you have continued to support Mr. Capone's decisions and approach. I will end -- I'm going to end with two questions for the board. Number one, if you truly believe that Mr. Capone has been and is an effective leader and you think that his tenure here should continue, we would really like to hear why. That's the first question. And I'd really like an answer. The second question is getting back to the one I alluded to before. What is the plan for the middle school principal and the middle school, high school assistant principal? Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. We will be discussing the middle school principal and assistant principal position in, I think, new business.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the other question? I think that, you know, a reasonable question. We've had so many questions and concerns. We'd like to know if you are supporting Mr. Capone. What are your reasons? Anybody, please?
Thank you, Ellen.
Nobody. So the non-response is that you don't have any reasons? You don't have any support?
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment? Did someone take the paper?
Hi, yeah, somebody took the paper. Fine.
If you could just check it to see if you have the sign-in roster, that would be great.
Lynn Fryer, 314 Wayne Street. I'll keep it short. I know the personnel issues are confidential, but I'm really baffled about your hiring and selection process. I understand that we recently almost offered the high school principal position to another district's cast-off and a person of very dubious moral character. It was the community's investment and involvement that circuited this hire, and I'm really grateful that the community has such vigilance and avoided that disaster. Please, please consider Ms. Adams for the middle school principal position. She's qualified. She's well-respected. And she would offer some stability to the middle school community at a time when stability is in real short supply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laney Rockland, South Second. So I believe that you said -- I'll wait till you're finished writing. I believe that you said you were bringing that up during new business, the posting. So am I correct in assuming that you will be posting the position for the middle school principal?
Yes.
I am correct in assuming that. Thank you. I would again ask, as I did a couple of weeks ago, you've got to have parents and teachers on that initial screening committee for applications. They know how to vet. Our superintendent obviously doesn't. Because if he had vetted Mr. Bevere, he never would have gotten to the position that he got to. Mr. Capone needs all the help he can get in vetting. So I implore you to make sure that you have parents and teachers on that application screening committee and that you don't ask them the day before. You give them ample period of time, especially if it's going to occur perhaps during the summer. That would be the respectful thing to do. With regard to what Dana was saying about all those benchmarks, where did this originate? This idea of the multiple benchmarks? Did it originate from one person, from our superintendent, and then you voted on it? Did it come from a committee? May I ask you to respond to that? Where did the idea, the ungodly idea that you would ask for multiple benchmarks over 20, 24 tests, where did that come from? Was it a consensus that was reached? Did it come from one person and then you all mulled it over? Were there people who voted against it and some voted for it? Can someone respond to me?
So this is not a board-driven decision? This is administrative?
It's an administrative decision? So all these benchmarks, the decision to abuse these teachers with these multiple benchmarks came from what position? Whose position, if I may ask?
I hate to jump in here and--
You said administrative. I mean, sometimes these general statements, oh, it's administration, or as Mr. Capone said a couple of weeks ago, it was central office. I would personally like to know the specific position or perhaps the name.
Just to jump in and respond to her question or to echo it, I don't -- I'm not going to pretend that I understand everything that was said in the letter from the teachers, but I don't understand what this is. So I had been planning and--
I'd like to -- let me just jump in.
Can I just -- I wanted to ask about this in new business.
Well, right, so this is what I was going to say. Laney, if you could finish your comments and then we're going to bring this up because this is the first that the board is hearing about this.
This is the first the board is hearing about?
From Dara. So what I'd like you to do is, the comments that you have with regard to this, you can just finish them. You know, we'll get into that conversation here at the board table.
I'm almost done, but not quite. This is the first the board is hearing about these multiple assessments that are being demanded of our faculty. This and the children. I'm sorry. I don't forget them ever. Usually I don't lack words. It is unfathomable to me that a board would be kept in the dark with regard to such a major decision that has such a huge impact. And if, in fact, they are kept in the dark, something is running amok and it's serious and I don't even know. I mean, it's borderline criminal to me. It's emotionally abusive. It's professionally abusive. And if anyone here is going along with this decision, you don't belong here. You can't do this to these teachers or these students. And if you're pleased knowing that you do agree with it, do you not have a conscience? Shame on you.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there any other public comment?
Virginia Lofton, 303 South Second. I first spoke about my concerns with the NJASK and the testing involved with that. And then I started learning about these summative assessments. And Dara said, what, 20 or 24 testing requirements throughout the year, I think? Maybe more, I don't know. Sorry, 20 or 24 test requirements throughout the year. So that is on top of these other state-required tests. So because of these test requirements, it takes away any opportunity for creative learning. And it's just rote learning. It's teaching to the test and no ability for our kids to learn in more creative ways. No opportunity for independent study. No opportunity for anything other than testing. So I think if this is the first time you're hearing about this, then it's really something that you need to review. And if this is an administrative decision, then, and it's not state-required, you can review it and get rid of a lot of it. And with the administrative, this is maybe an opportunity for parents to get onto a committee to help to review maybe the amount of testing that's going on and the amount of requirements necessary for this or to help go over some of this. Because it is a burden to the kids and obviously to the teachers.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, for--
Michelle McFadden-Dina Cola, 118 South Second Avenue. I don't really want to make speech, I'm really tired of doing that. I want some answers, and I hope you can give them to me. First of all, I'd like to know, how's that opt-out policy coming?
I didn't hear that, could you?
How is the opt-out policy coming?
You can make your comments, and as there are items that, when you're completed your comments, we can discuss some of those items if it's relevant.
I did, I would like an answer to that question. How is the opt-out policy coming? Is it in the works? Is it ever going to be in the works? Is it finished? Is it complete? Did you start it? Do you intend to start it? Those are lots of questions you can answer, and I'm going to give you the rest of my three minutes to do so.
We have not started working on it. We're waiting more guidance from the state.
Okay. Have you considered asking Ms. Adams to come back as the principal of the middle school? Did I slip into Italian by accident? Because I think I'm speaking English. I deserve an answer.
We aren't going to be discussing personnel issues.
That's what I thought you'd say. Do you know or care what's happening to the community? Because it looks like you don't, and I want to give you the benefit of the doubt. Is my three minutes up yet? Thank you. Is that a personnel issue or something? I'm serious, I don't understand why we can't get an answer.
You know what? I'll bite on this one. Maybe I shouldn't bite on this one.
I appreciate it.
I shouldn't bite on this because it's really wrong for me to respond to a question like this because you are asking me, you're asking me to tell the community that I don't care. And it offends me to such a tremendous extent that anyone in this community would think that anyone at this table doesn't care. We care very deeply about this school. We care very deeply about the teachers in this school. We care very deeply about what happens to the children in this school. And we want to see the school succeed. And it is utterly infuriating to sit at a table and be berated by people and to be asked to respond to questions that are frankly unanswerable. You know the answer to the question. I wouldn't be sitting at this table if I didn't care. No one at this table would be here if they didn't care. We all care very deeply about this school system. So, yes, we care very deeply about this school, okay? And I don't understand why we need to continue to be reminded every day that you think we don't, because we do. So, thank you. That's my response.
I really honestly do appreciate a response. It's a lot better than silence. And I believe that you do care about what's happening here. I've been to every single board meeting since November because I also care, and I want to hear back. I am not a person that gives up easily. And I've been waiting since November to see some action behind those words because I honestly do believe that you in particular care. So, thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Michelle.
Claire Dominic, 328 Harper Place. This is a rather spontaneous gesture, speaking about caring. And I know this community cares about the education and the well-being of this community. I have twin daughters, Mr. Capone, who graduated last year. They just finished their freshman year of college. But I'd like to talk to you. In this room, I see the two powers that were in my daughter's kindergarten class, all the way up through their senior advisor, Ms. Harper. So, what I'd like, if you're willing to, all those children who were a part of Maggie and Jessie's education and life and growth in the 13 years they were in this district, and who were a part of my other family's life, meaning my partner, and of my life, would you please stand? Because I would like to applaud you for all you have done for my family. Thank you. If you were ever questioning the dedication, if you were ever questioning the dedication of individuals who have been in the Highland Park School community, that is a representation of 13 years of dedicated work. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, for curriculum, I'd like to move items one and two.
Second.
My motion, Catherine, second. Curriculum items. One and two, do you have that? Is there any discussion about the curriculum items? Israel, if we could have a roll call?
Mr. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Rusty?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Catherine?
I'd like to move items one through four on the finance agenda.
Second.
Catherine's motion, Jerry's, second.
I have a question.
Is there any discussion?
I saw the email that... I saw the email that came about the Safe Routes to School project. And Tim or Israel, can you guys speak a little bit more? I mean, this sounds great. I mean, I'm just curious about it. Do you have any more information? I mean, this is a lighted, I mean, just could you explain a little bit better what it is? I think it's pretty cool, but I just want to understand a little bit better.
I mean, the resolution was an ask of support from the board whether or not this was going to be something that was beneficial. So, it was not something that was, again, a financial cost. It was just that, you know, this was something that we would support as a...
So, the borough was offering to put something in place?
The borough got a grant. The borough...
The borough got a grant for us.
Yeah.
For the community at large.
Yeah, they're applying for a grant. We actually haven't received it.
And they're asking for our support on this.
That's right.
Great, okay.
And I can just, we have the resolution here. This is passed by the Borough Council. And it's about funding to make infrastructure improvements to South Fifth Avenue that will improve the walking and biking environment for students of Bartle Elementary School. It's proposing to reconstruct the crosswalk at South Fifth Avenue, which serves Bartle and school walkers and bicyclists on the major route to school. There will be a much-needed safety improvement in the area that will clearly provide a much safer transportation experience for student walkers and bike riders, as well as students with disabilities and the general population of pedestrians and bicyclists. And as was said, this is just an act of support from the board. This is the borough's grant application. And obviously, we are supportive of it, certainly. Is there any other discussion on those four items? Israel, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Rusty?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
And can we have a personnel report, please?
I'd like to move items one through eight on the regular agenda and item nine on the addendum, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of those items?
I actually think that this might be a more appropriate spot for discussing the plans for the middle school, middle school, high school assistant. Certainly for me to feel comfortable. And again, as other people have stated in their comments, having absolutely nothing to do with my faith in Mr. Lassiter and his ability to perform the duties of the high school principal. But, you know, one of my, my concerns continues to be that the middle school is the one school that has experienced the least disruption this year. And now this is, moving Mr. Lassiter from the middle school to the high school adds the middle school to the list of buildings that have lost their lead administrator. So, I mean, I would kind of like to know, kind of be able to do a bit of a risk-benefit analysis, so to speak, before I personally feel comfortable being able to vote on that item. And also, I mean, again, we, personnel didn't meet tonight. Personnel didn't meet before the last meeting. I feel like I've been given very little information with which to make this decision. Also, I don't know what other options were considered after the last principal was pulled from the agenda. I don't...
So, again, we've made recommendations for three principals. All three times, I followed the recommendation of the committee based on those recommendations. Mr. Lassiter, if you remember, was the person that would have been, under the recommendation that I made when we were looking at the budget as far as taking over both buildings and being the single administrator. I have full confidence that he has the ability to transfer to this position. And it's where I think that we have the greatest need and believe that he'll do an excellent job.
Great, can you explain what you mean by greatest need? Because to me, the middle school is this interesting dichotomy. In talking to parents, I think it's the school that a lot of the parents feel most strongly about in terms of their positive experience there for their children. And, but then simultaneously, it is the school that is the focus school that puts us under the scrutiny of the regional achievement centers that brings a lot of turmoil into this district. So, I think you could also view the middle school as the school of most concern and the one where we may want to consider keeping the most stability.
The high school is what sends our students out into career and college readiness. It's the most critical from that standpoint as far as them being well-prepared. And I think is, you know, having good leadership there. It's the flagship school when you're talking about what a high school means within a district. That is the capstone of everything that occurs within the district. And again, I believe that Mr. Lassiter is the right choice to lead that building. And I do think it's not minimizing the importance of middle school, but I also, I do believe it's most critical at the high school level.
I'm actually thinking that because Mr. Lassiter did do such a great job at the middle school, and it has a great foundation. He still is here, I'm sure, and as a mentorship capacity, just, you know, just being here in general. I'd actually, if we have to bring somebody in there that's going to just, you know, follow the, you know, grow with what he's done. You know, I feel comfortable with him. I'm actually happy to have him at the high school because I think we need his guidance and his leadership there as well. But I just feel, we just have to make sure that what's been in place at the middle school is going to stay and go, you know, and that's going to improve every year as well.
Dan, do you want to have a discussion about the, do you want to have this discussion about the sort of potential options that we have now? Or do you want to wait until New Business?
I don't think that that's directly relevant to this. So, I think we can, we'll wait until New Business. Is there any other discussion of the personnel items?
Well, I mean, I'm, Darcy, I'm not, I understand part of your question, but I, but to respond to part of the question, I'm personally very excited that Mr. Lassiter is, wants this. And I'm very excited by the fact that we can offer it to him. I think he's, I think he's the great, great choice for the position. You asked the question from the point of view of, should we consider keeping someone in a position and not move them to another position when someone has asked to be moved to the other position, in theory? I, this is probably veering very close to personnel discussion, and I don't, I don't want it to go that far. But if this is something he wants, I'm excited for him, and I think he's going to be great for it. And hopefully, I didn't overstep the boundaries of what's appropriate to say. But I'm excited for him. And I think that's the only thing that we should be for him at this point. He's an asset to the district, and he stays in the district. And this is great for us.
And I want to make it clear, you know, I prefaced my comments with saying this had absolutely nothing to do with Mr. Lassiter himself or my, you know, any doubt that I have about his capacity for the high school. Trust me, Greg, I would like nothing better than if I felt like all personnel decisions were based on what our staff wants. That would be a fantastic... However, I think we have more than enough evidence to say that that's not what has happened this year. And in many cases, maybe quite possibly, the opposite has been the case. So, I was wanting to look at this from a broader perspective of what's advantageous to the entire district, particularly the middle school, which brings a lot of unwanted attention to the district from the state. That was my question and my concern.
Is there any other discussion of the personnel items? Israel, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Rusty?
I'm sorry, I really feel like I can't do anything but abstain on one through eight until I feel like personnel stuff is a little bit more solid.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
And policies?
There's nothing to move.
Okay. For the president's report, the first thing that I have to say is, I attended graduation, and it was a very, very moving event. This is the first time that I've ever been able to give a commencement speech. And to be there, working in a school, and being at, you know, around kids all day. I've been to many, many graduations. But to be able to stand on the stage and hand out diplomas was just, it was a phenomenal experience. I want to congratulate the families. I especially want to congratulate the students. It's a tremendous accomplishment. And obviously, we look forward to hearing about the wonderful things that happen to all the students as they enter the next stage of their life. The second thing I want to say, and I was not planning to say anything about this, but with all the teachers in the room, I feel like I have to say something. And if this is transposed, please take out the ums because I'm sure that I will stumble here and there. I am a teacher. My mom was a teacher. My grandfather was a teacher and a principal for very many years. My other grandfather was a university professor. And my background is just all about education. I currently work as the math department chair at Piscataway High School. I'm a teaching department chair, which means that I am subject to all the same things that my staff is doing. So, we've gone through SGOs, and we've gone through Danielson training, and we've gone through standards-based unit exams and performance tracker and Genesis reports and all of those kinds of things where I am as well. For me, this, you know, when I became president of the board in January, my hope was that we would be able to find a quick resolution to the issues that were involved with the district. And clearly, that hasn't happened. And clearly, there's a lot of blame on the administration, on the board. There are a lot of things that could have been done better, and there are a lot of things that can still be done better. And I don't think that anybody on the board feels that, feels, you know, any way different than that. I do have to say, though, that, you know, as Greg said, we are very committed. The problem is... The problem is that we have not yet seen the fruits of the work that we've sought to, you know, to enact in this district. And the support of the teachers, the support of the students, making smart decisions for both staff and students, that really has not yet, you know, been seen. And I'm waiting to see that. And when I hear things like Dara's comments about 24 benchmarks, you know, I'm very interested in having that conversation because we use data to, you know, formatively assess our students as well and we do a lot of benchmarking, but it's not 24. And I understand being in a classroom and being subjected to that is, it's sort of a ludicrous proposition. These kinds of things, these kinds of things, they sit very poorly with me. And to see, you know, so many teachers here, I'm very supportive of all of you, the things that you do during the day, the things that you do during the summer, your right to organize, your right to have a collective voice through the teachers' union. I'm very, very supportive of all those things because I am a part of that, I was a part of that, my mother was a very strong part of that as well. And I want to say that if, you know, if we don't start seeing better results from this side of the table, then there really will be, you know, serious consequences. I don't, you know, I'm not going to answer the question, the rhetorical questions that are asked at the, you know, at the podium. But I do want you to know that, you know, when we look at the things that have happened and some of the things that are real, serious issues, we recognize them as real, serious issues. And we want nothing more than to squash those issues, to eliminate those issues and provide the best possible environment for all of you. So, you can not believe me if you want to not believe me, those of you who know me know that I don't speak anything other than from the heart and, you know, I do hope that we can show you that through the actions of the board, that the administration can rise to the challenge and can rise to the level of expectation that the board really is requiring that it perform at and that we see positive changes in the future. So, I just wanted to say that. Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
Hold on, you didn't even give me a chance to get to the microphone.
Sorry, Darcy.
One very exciting item for old business is I wanted to update everyone in case they hadn't seen today, that Senator Sweeney has decided that tomorrow the full senate will vote on S. 2154, which is the companion bill to 3081. I personally spoke with Senator Barnes yesterday and he assured me, he actually was a little confused, it was kind of funny, he thought that he was a primary sponsor of the bill, but he wasn't listed as a primary sponsor on the bill, so we kind of went back and forth about whether he was on the bill or not and he assured me that if he was not on the bill, he would get on the bill and that the bill had his full support. So, nonetheless, I would still encourage teachers, parents, anybody who's in the room listening, anybody watching it on YouTube or wherever, to give a call to Senator Barnes' office and thank him tremendously for his support. He always makes a point whenever I speak with him about education issues to comment about how supportive he is of our district and we want to let him know how much we appreciate that.
Thank you, Darcy. Any updates on the resolution, on whether that's made the circuit?
Um, well, I mean, I think this is kind of going so fast that the resolution kind of becomes moot. If this gets passed tomorrow, then we just wait for the governor to veto it and then see what happens next.
Well said.
Although he did also make a very strange comment today that in the next 10 days, I don't know if anybody saw this, in the next 10 days, I think Melissa saw this, wherever Melissa is, in the next 10 days, he's going to be making some comment about testing in New Jersey, so it's very bizarre and cryptic, so we'll see what that ends up meeting.
Yes, we look forward to Governor Christie's statement on testing. Is there any other old business? Is there any new business?
I have a quick item. I attended the library board meeting this week, they were very happy to have the return of a rep, I guess they've been with that one for a while. And they asked, and I guess this is something that we need to reach out to the high school about, that when students are sort of calculating their community service credits, they often have the need, especially around their book sale, for help and they were thinking that strapping young high school students would be just the thing for help. And so that's something that we might want to reach out to, to the high school about.
Okay. All right, so we, we need to have the conversation about the hiring of the middle school principal and the high school, middle school assistant principal. So, you want to start? Give some of your thoughts?
Well, I think the most important thing is that we get the posting out and that we start looking at what the impact is going to be to start the year. You know, we had extensive conversation about this earlier in the year as far as, you know, what the duties are. You know, the decision was made to move forward and I think that's the model that we're using moving forward. One middle school principal and one split assistant.
So, it seems like we have a few options, like, as if we could perhaps hire an interim while we do the search or we could ask Mike to serve as interim for the middle school while we do the search.
She's just laying out the options, relax.
Never mind.
Right, I mean, I think the important question is, do we want to post for the middle school principal and also middle school interim principal at the same time? Because we can, I mean, if we, our next board meeting is July 21st. If we hire someone who has administrative experience, if they're in a 12-month position, they'll be held 60 days, which puts them entering the district September 21st, which means that there's, you know, no principal per se working that transition through.
I think if we, I don't, I think we should get an interim principal or should seek one anyways, even if we end up not hiring an interim principal because we find a solid permanent principal during that process, but I think not, we, well, that's my opinion. I think we should hire an interim and see what, and let the, let the search for the middle school principal take its course without having that other pressure of having a gap in resources in the school. I think we should be plugging that gap. I think that just seems like a sane approach to me, that's why we have interim principals out there.
I'm just wondering though, why, we didn't do an interim at Irving and we didn't do an interim at the high school and we had coverage, is there a reason that we're deciding to change that? I mean, we've been talking about how, you know, we've heard nothing but positive things about Mr. Soto covering for the high school. Is there a reason to change that approach? Have we?
The other position that you need to consider at this point is a curriculum position.
Oh wait, can we finish the conversation about the other one?
It's all the same conversation, Darcy, if we're looking at, you're downed administrator already and now you're talking about the things that need to be done in the planning going into next year. You know, and again, we had, you know, complaints raised as far as, you know, we were doing it for financial reasons and, you know, moving forward into this year, I think it's critical that you have somebody there to start the year and I would agree, I think the interim is the right way to go. I think it's, it's critical to start the year with somebody in place and I don't think we should risk not having someone there.
I think the summer is a hard transition time, I think that's, you know, and it would be, it would certainly be good to have a principal who's just dedicated to that, Israel could do the other parts of his job. We could, I mean, we do have to look at the curriculum position as well and the question is, what do we want to do with it? It could be a supervisor position, it could be a director level position, you know, this is a...
Can you explain the difference between those?
There's actually not too much of a difference, just really the title, yeah. But would we be looking at a K-12 curriculum supervisor? Would we be looking at a 6-12 content supervisor?
I think, I think we need a K-12. I think, I think that that's imperative, actually, no?
Yeah, I mean, again, we put forward the model that I thought was going to be most efficient and allow us to address all of those needs. Again, I think we're just talking about title change.
Right, but, but, but the original position was a K-12 position anyway.
Correct, yes.
Before we talk about the curriculum, let's go back to the principal. Are we going to, what are we doing about the?
Well, I think that they, I think, I think part of what was just being addressed was that it seems like Mr. Soto is going to have responsibilities in central office given that they're, they're downed somebody. So, that may be why for the summer, he wouldn't be available.
Well, they're not downed anyone for the summer. Ms. Callis is here till the end of the summer, no?
August 1st.
August 1st.
But you're talking about the work that needs to be done in a building is really critical and I don't think that you leave the start of school up to chance. I think you need to have somebody there.
Well, an option that I would like to just throw out on the table is one thing that we've talked about at the board table a couple of times now is the attractiveness or whether a split middle school, high school principal is a good model or not. I'd like us to consider the idea of perhaps a full-time middle school principal, a full-time, a vice principal, a full-time high school vice principal and then somehow delegate the curriculum responsibilities in those buildings between that principal and vice principal. And then have the curriculum at Bartle and Irving also fall into the, the building leadership there instead of having a district-wide position, bring that more back to the building level.
Can you repeat the whole proposal because I missed what you were saying?
We've, there's been a couple of discussions about the middle school, high school vice principal position not really necessarily working, that splitting that position may not be a good idea. So, if we're thinking that maybe that's not a good idea and we've had two middle school, high school principals in the past two years not thrive in that position, or I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not in any way saying Ms. Adams didn't thrive in that position, but we haven't maintained someone in that position, is what I meant to say. That perhaps the thing that we should think about is a full-time high school vice principal, a full-time middle school vice principal and having the curriculum responsibilities roll into those, into those positions.
Would they be 12-month positions in your thinking? 12-month positions?
I would think so.
I can tell you that at one point during Franny and Karen's administration, it became very clear that there was not continuity of curriculum and that was a very big issue that from building to building, children were, that the gaps were not being filled. And so that was why the idea of a, of a district curriculum person was really sort of floated even while Franny was here because, because we were really missing chunks, children were missing chunks.
But one of the things we're talking about with teachers is the idea of common planning time and how important that is and we seem to be making that a priority and it would seem that if we could have the building leaders between the four buildings meet on a regular basis to make sure that that was a, to make sure that that was a priority, that the curriculum flowed from K to 12, it's just an idea to kick around.
I mean, there are certainly, there are schools that do that. Delaware Valley has assistant principals, assistant principal who's the director of curriculum. It's a nine to 12 school, so it's the same thing, larger student population, you know, that's an integrated position. Do you have any thoughts, one way or the other? I mean, part of the, and certainly the vertical articulation of curriculum from K to 12 is an important issue. Common Core has taken care of a lot of that for math and English, but there are other, you know, the other subject areas need guidance and there are standards that exist, but there needs to sort of be someone overseeing that. The question would be, without someone whose position was totally dedicated to curriculum, could that still function from the central office in some way, you know, overseeing that? You know, you have building principals who are going to be, you know, there's a lot to do as a building principal and the amount of observations alone that they have to do now is staggering.
Well, and that's why you would have a full-time vice principal in both, in both buildings.
But the same is true for Bartle and Irving, right? I mean, you have 50 staff members, you have 150 observations and, you know, some of those get taken by central office personnel, but you're still talking 110 observations at, you know, best case scenario. That's a lot. So, to think about doing that and then also putting on curriculum as, as a primary responsibility, it's a lot. I mean, it could be done certainly, but I guess that's the question.
Again, I mean, we've talked, I think, at length as far as the concerns with having a shared assistant principal. I think my concern with now going the other way and saying that we don't need somebody overseeing curriculum on a K to 12 basis is the fact that that's where we have spent so much time this year trying to get these things in line, to get us up to date, to get us, you know, back really where we need to be as far as having the curriculum in line. And I think where, I just think that's a little bit short-sighted. You know, maybe for a year, you know, with, with the changes that have just been made and the curriculum updates that have occurred, you could get away with that, but I don't think that's a long-term solution from the standpoint of making sure that, you know, we're building cohesive units and that the transitions are appropriate and, you know, that things are properly aligned throughout the district.
So, what you're suggesting, Darcy, is that we would have a, just to fill in all of the blanks, we would still have a principal at the high school, we would still have a principal at the middle school, we would have, in your proposal, a full-time vice principal at the middle school and a full-time vice principal at the high school and as part of their duties, a substantial part of their duties, they would oversee curriculum in their respective buildings, right? Who oversees curriculum and going back to what Dan was talking about, who then oversees curriculum in Bartle and Irving?
I don't know that I have it that fleshed out at this point.
Okay, all right.
It would be the principal.
I just want to make sure, so you, so, okay.
Well, I mean, but there may be also, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I mean, so, going back to one of the questions, if that's, so you're, what we're saying, what you're suggesting is instead of having a district-wide K to 12 curriculum director, whatever we call the title, that we would really just change that position and move it over to either the middle school or the high school and it really would be a net zero change to personnel in the district, right?
Personnel, there would still be the same number of people.
Right.
Right.
The, just the titles would change.
The job functions would change though.
Job, yeah, yeah, I understand some things would shift around. Just going back to the question of managing curriculum, if you had multiple people, just trying to dig into this a little bit deeper, if there are multiple people participating in the development of the curriculum, you, you said it might be short-sighted of us to do it that way and I'm trying to understand, I'm not advocating for this because I'm, this is the first time I'm hearing the idea and I just want to think it out a little bit to see how much it makes sense. What's short-sighted about that? What doesn't make sense and where, I'm not saying this does, I just would like to understand better about what doesn't make sense about that idea and why that would potentially be problematic for us.
I mean, right now you have, the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction doesn't write all of the curriculum. What they're doing is they're making sure that this is aligned, that all of these, these components fit together and that it carries through. You know, Dan said, you know, this is the first that he's seen this and again, I don't know what's been discussed as far as the benchmarks and how many in, have been discussed in curriculum. I'm not aware of this number either, honestly. So, you know, that's something, I don't know, Israel, I mean, you've sat in those curriculum, but I really don't know where that number is coming from. So, but the point is, is that you're trying to make sure that the alignment, you know, is there and that you have somebody that's overseeing to make sure that the standards are being followed all the way through and that the, the work that's being done, that the resources that are appropriate, that they build and the skill levels and the content standards built. So, that's what that position is, you also have the coordination of the professional development, you have, you know, the, the alignment over all of those components. And I don't think, you know, one of the things that we tried to do this year based on, you know, what the financial circumstances was, is that we, as Darcy said, we tried to cover all the buildings using district office staff and we received a number of complaints about that, about how efficient that was, whether or not that worked or not, for whatever reason. I think the point is, is that you need to have people that are dedicated to that job and the same reason that I would say that we should get an interim middle school principal is the same reason that I think that you need to have somebody that's doing that coordination. Okay, you have to make sure that when changes occur, when things come up, that, that that work is done and that there's somebody dedicated to make sure that that's being done right.
My inclination seems, I feel like the, the current structure, right, we know that there are issues with it. So, the question would be, if we kept the current structure, how would you manage that assistant principal job where there's been three people in the last four years in that, in that role so that it is actually something that's manageable? My inclination would be to keep the structure the same as we have now and see if we could improve that position and if we can't, then I would probably be inclined to add another improve that position. And if we can't, then I would probably be inclined to add another assistant principal, but keep the district supervisor position as well, so that we don't lose that, you know, the large-scale curriculum piece of it. But really, the question is about that middle school assistant principal job.
So, again, you know, I've had a lot of conversation with Mike about his experience in that during the two years, and, you know, his statement was that that position is really made for burnout. And the jumping back and forth between two buildings was one of the key areas, of that you're in one building one day and one in the next, and that you're flip-flopping. I think that the way that you fix it is that you would be identifying what those management duties are, whether it's discipline, or whatever those are, and you combine them, and they are centrally located. In this conversation even became, you know, issues of communication, because if they're assigned in the other building, then, you know, the communication as far as getting back and forth was not very good. So if we correct the communication, and if we define specifically what those duties are, I think that makes it more manageable. And again, with the, when we were talking about initially, I think the important part is that the management duties are done by the assistant principals, and that the principal would be able to focus on the instruction and the improvement within the building.
So you're confident that if we look to, if we put out a position that is supervisor of curriculum and instruction, or director of curriculum and instruction, and we hire a position for the middle school assistant principal, and a middle school principal, that will have our bases covered? Middle, high school assistant principal?
Well, again, I mean, I think in what we're talking about right now, that that's the best circumstance.
I mean, is there a, because the idea that the assistant principal is in one school one day and then in another school the other day, sort of, you know, belies the idea that there's going to be issues in the school in which that person is not. I wonder, is there, I mean, maybe it's as simple as having a sort of a centrally located office somewhere? Is there an office sort of near the library, or something that's sort of close to the middle of the two schools that could serve as?
And again, Mike and I had probably an hour-plus conversation on this specifically, but it was more based on, do we have walkie-talkies where they can communicate that if something happens, that they can get back and forth?
Right.
You know, very simple communication, and not being dedicated just to one building, where then the principal is doing all of the management duties in the other building on that day. But defining the role to be management, and making sure that all of the management runs through there.
Okay.
Cell phones, don't they?
There are some high schools that have one assistant principal, right, that are bigger than our high school and middle school put together, so.
Yeah.
So are we comfortable with this as the posting? Middle school principal, middle school interim principal? And, you know, the results of that will, if we get someone who's a great interim and who's interested, then that gives us more time to find the right person for the middle school. High school, middle school assistant principal, and supervisor of curriculum and instruction, or supervisor of curriculum, or K-12 curriculum supervisor? Something of that nature?
That's what I think would be good.
Is there, so I know with the interim superintendents, there was actually a sort of a list somewhere. Is there such a thing for principal? I mean, just because obviously speed would be of the essence, it'd be nice to have somebody sort of in the building.
Yeah, we'd contact PSA, the association.
So there is, there's?
Yeah, PSA has all those, all that information. That's the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association. So they maintain a list of active retired principals who do interim work. Okay. So let's talk about the benchmarks.
Wait, wait. No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I'm not opposed, I think, you know, my first choice would obviously be if we could find, you know, get a principal set in there, but, I mean, if we can, if that as a backup plan.
If we have any--
I think would work, because I just, you know, I mean, I don't want to, you know, to clearly, right, our process has to be a little bit reworked, improved. I don't want to rush anything, so I don't want to rush into getting a middle school principal, if, you know, if an interim would be the best.
Even if we rush it, it wouldn't be until September 21st.
Can you use your mic, please?
Even if we rush it, it would still be three weeks into school, so it would be good, you can't, you can't, we have to have somebody in the central, we have to have somebody in the office, you know, when school opens. So we would have to do an interim in any case.
For at least for that part, okay.
Yeah. And for the summer. A lot goes on in the offices in the summer.
Okay. Well, and to bring it back to Ellen's comments earlier tonight, and at the last meeting, I think we need to do something between now and when we're looking to fill those positions, to reinstate confidence in this community regarding how we're conducting our searches for these high-level positions. So--
And I think that the vetting, the vetting piece of it is important.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah. The vetting piece of it is important.
I'm sorry?
The vetting piece of it.
Yes. Well, so how are we, I mean, how are we going to accomplish that?
I think that's a, is that a discussion we can have and open?
I mean, I don't think that that's a discussion that you can have, especially when you're referencing a vetting process that, you know, I don't think that you want to discuss that.
But certainly the--
We don't want to be--
Certainly the--
I mean, one of the, one of the very simple issues that I heard addressed at the last meeting was just simply that the, I'll wait till people are listening.
We're talking about, in general, just a generic process-oriented question, unrelated to any particular position, right, would be--
So the process for vetting is that you take your applicant, you have the references, and you go back and you check the references that are provided?
No, I'm sorry, the screening. I'm sorry, I think maybe the screening is what I meant, maybe meant to say.
So the screening that we use is to go through and identify people that have certificates, and have experience, and make decisions on who moves on. When, it's a very simplistic process, and you re-rate them, and then you bring forward the best candidates. From that, those people were then interviewed. All of those candidates then went on to the committee, okay, in all of these situations, and then the recommendation comes from those committees.
I'm sorry.
That's the process that exists.
I'm still not clear. The beginning process, I mean, this was something that Ellen was very clear about. She, they, it sounded like the committee wanted to know how many applications were received, and they were told, we can't, we don't know that information, we don't have that information. So what's happening from, we get a pile of 20, 30, 40 applications to the committee? What, that's, is that just you? Is that you and Mr. Soto? Is that?
It depends on the position. It is someone at the district office that's going through and is reviewing those resumes.
So the last, at the end of the last meeting, whenever we discussed this, you suggested that maybe that we should have a committee talk about this. I mean, I don't know whether about, to review the process and to try to set something up, is that what our goal is right now, is to set up that process? Or, I'm just--
I would certainly like to see that. I would certainly like to see a committee of some of the people who have been on these committees, the personnel committee, administrators, sit down, hash out a process that we can present to the public, and say, here it is, this is our process. And then if something comes up, it seems harder to imagine we would be in the same position we were in in this last search that we were in.
What do you think the situation was with the last search, Darcy? What do you think the situation was?
A situation was, a candidate was put forward that--
That went through the process, was recommended by the committee, was vetted based on their references.
I would like to clarify something. There is a big difference, you keep saying recommended by the committee. There is a big difference between the person who came out on top in the pile that they were given, and recommended by the committee. I think those two things are light-years apart. And I think that's what Ellen was trying to express to us this evening, is there's, there's a world of difference between those two things. And feeling confident that all the candidates put forward were truly the best candidates we could have gotten.
So as I said before--
I've heard, oh, excuse me, please let me finish, Mike.
If you want to have a policy as a board--
Please let me finish my comment. I am still speaking.
Then that's what you set forward.
Mr. Capone, I am still speaking.
Then you set that forward as a board and as a policy.
Mr. Capone, I'm still speaking, so I didn't even hear your comment. So if you'd let me finish, now I forgot what I was even going to say. There is a difference between feeling like you have the best candidate. What I was going to say is that I've heard of other districts running a search, not being happy with any of the candidates, and completely restarting the search from the beginning, whether that be for a superintendent, or whether that be for a principal. That, I think, if this committee had more time to investigate this particular candidate, may have been the position that we were in. We would have started from square one.
I actually don't think that's the committee's responsibility at all, though. I mean--
Oh, I'm not saying it is the committee's responsibility, but I think, I don't feel like the committee, we had two people who were on that committee, get up and speak, two, not just one, two, who felt like the process didn't work, and that they weren't given enough information to properly--
But I think that that's really, the key is about making people feel comfortable, that the situation that they're in is about as transparent as possible.
Absolutely.
But I actually think, I mean, what Tim said before was that every candidate who had certification was moved into the first round of interviews, based on the number of applications. So I don't know if you gave--
I don't, I don't know the number of applications.
Darcy, Darcy, if you gave, if you gave that information to the committee, and you said there were 24 applicants, you know, seven of them were partially filled out, you know, these 10 had principal CE or certification with advanced standing, whatever it is, I mean, that's really the missing piece of information, right? I mean, the question of whether you recommend the top three, if the top three means that they are three good candidates, I think that's a really important question. If you recommend, you can always recommend the top three, but those three could be three great candidates, one phenomenal candidate, and two duds, or, you know, three duds. And so, this is, I think, where the disconnect is, right? Those three candidates that were brought up, you know, how did the committee feel about them, et cetera? How did that process work? That's the piece of it that makes people feel unsure. And then you have a candidate who turns out to have, you know, made it to the top of the pile, who, you know, was not moved forward in the process by the board. And then people feel very uncomfortable about the process that they went through, but that actually, that part of the process is not the faulty part of it. If, you know, the candidates were vetted, or the candidates were screened, they were interviewed, and they were moved forward, the last piece of it is the question, you know, the reference checks, what do you find out about people, how, you know, all those types of things, that's, you know, that's the last piece of it.
Well, and I think someone else I would like to have participate in the committee is Gwen from New Jersey School Boards, because I've spoken about these issues with her a few times, and she's suggested that you don't just call the references that a candidate provides, that you also call the references from schools where the candidate did not list a reference. And you call those districts, and you may just get, A, yes, this person served in this district from X date to Y date, and, you know, then you kind of do with that information what you will. Or maybe you get some other kind of information. But that there's pieces of the process that personally I feel are lacking. Another piece that I've mentioned that I think would be helpful was, what it sounds like to me in this search was, this candidate was interviewed on Wednesday, he was on an agenda on Friday. That's a lightning-fast turnaround time. Perhaps if that candidate, and I've talked to other board members who've said in the past that principal candidates were brought to the board before they were ever put onto an agenda. So the board knows the name of that candidate, the board gets to meet that candidate, you kind of make sure they don't have foreheads, or, you know, I mean, then the board has--
It's not really the board's responsibility. I mean, the board--
I'm not saying it's not the board's responsibility to know who a candidate is--
It's not the board's responsibility to--
Not just approve a name on a piece of paper.
It's not the board's responsibility to administer the district.
How would that be administering the district? It would just be, this is the candidate that the administration is putting forward, just to come in and say hello.
Okay. I mean, that's different, certainly.
I mean, that's all I was saying.
Or even have one or two or someone from the personnel committee involved in the screening, in the initial screening process. I don't think the actual committee part, and this is just from my experiences from being on them as a parent, once you get to that actual interview committee, right, you know, that part was, that ran fine. Maybe it's like, from the, you know, starting from the very beginning, starting from the screening process. We need to, we need to work on that.
So the suggestion is, let's put a group of people together to get some ideas and recommendations about what the process should be, and then we can have a discussion the next meeting or the meeting after that, about what those recommendations are, and--
We need to do it a lot faster than that, unfortunately.
Make some decisions about the process?
I think the thing maybe is just for Tim to contact people that were on the search committees--
Well, I mean--
And have a discussion with those folks about what worked, what didn't work, what they would like to see moving forward. Because we do have to move forward with hiring.
Here's a strong suggestion that I, you should consult with our attorneys on this, because I don't know what the implications are of it in the grand scheme of things, but I think it's probably important that when we look at candidates who are leaders of the school, they should, we should be looking at their Facebook, or their Twitter, their social media accounts. At the end of the day, that's, I mean, but I think that that's a really slippery slope, and I think that you need to talk to the attorneys about that, because I think there's a lot of human resources landmines sitting in there. And if we want to make it a practice to do that, we have to be very careful about what that means. I mean, it's, so, consult with, I think you should consult with an attorney before making that a practice, and if you make it a practice, it should be consistent across the board. But that's something that should be done, if it can be.
Okay. All right, let's talk about benchmarks. So Dara presented information about 24 formal assessments per English course, which is non-inclusive of all of the other classroom assessments, plus midterms and finals.
Dan, I'm sorry, I would feel more comfortable if we had a solid idea of a conclusion to what we were just talking about.
Sure.
Like, what is the solid plan? What's--
So I think that, I think Tim should convene a committee of people who are on the hiring committees, and talk about what worked, what didn't work. And I would say, move the process forward from there. And we can have, if you're comfortable with someone from the personnel committee being at that discussion, I think we, you know, so that the board is represented in that discussion, so that there's real, that there's information that's getting out firsthand about, you know, that conversation.
And what kind of timeline are we going to put on that? I mean, it seems to me that's pretty imperative.
It should be soon, yes. It should be, I mean, if it could be next week, that would be great. If it has to be the week after--
Okay. What do you think about the suggestion to have Gwen there?
To have what?
Gwen, our school board's rep.
At the committee meeting?
Yeah.
At this particular discussion?
Hey, why not?
I can't hurt--
I'm in for one.
Yeah, sure, why not? She's a nice lady, you know? She can certainly contribute, I mean. Okay, so--
Thank you.
So what do we do about these benchmarks? And--
Well, but in the meantime, the other piece is, we do need, I mean, we have to post-- We do need to look into that social media issue, and I don't know if there's, I don't, if it is feasible to be doing it, we should consult with the attorneys and make that a practice. I think that's something that--
If it's out there in public, then it's out there in public.
So--
Absolutely.
There are landmines in that, though, so we have to be careful.
So can you address the benchmarks? What, you know, this is the first you're seeing of this?
As far as the way this is laid out, again, I'm not aware of this. Obviously, we had talked about and had the board approve the writing of the benchmarks, but as far as the number here, again, you know, I don't sit in the curriculum committee, I don't know what conversations have been held as far as this. And I can't speak to--
We haven't spoken about this at all.
I can't speak to the number, or that this is, you know, accurate, what the length of these are, as far as whether or not these are 10 minutes or two hours. So I can't really comment on it at this point.
Okay.
You know, obviously with the Fuentes and Pennell, that was something that we discussed--
Please.
At length, as far as the fact that this was something that we were carrying K through eight. And so that is something that we've discussed, but as far as, you know, the individual components in this number here.
Okay, so your charge, obviously, is to go back to Michelle and find out why this is, I mean, this is bad practice.
Absolutely.
This should be drastically reduced. Dara made suggestions, which I believe are in here, but certainly, reviewing this process before moving forward with the writing of 24 formal benchmarks per English class, which seems like a mountain to climb.
Again, the length of time of what these are, I don't know. If these are short formal assessments--
Right, if they're five-minute, two-hours, or something like that, that's a different story.
Sure, there's a big difference between what that means. Or if these are all class or, so...
Hypothetically, if they are. Okay, so the charge is, you know, please, you know, from the board's perspective, check this out and try to get back to us on that. And we'll talk next month at the Curriculum Committee about this, and we'll report out to the board about the process.
And I would say about, this is just specific, obviously, to language arts. If there have been any other plans in terms of math, in terms of other subjects, we'd need that information as well.
I hear rumors that there have been. Okay, is there any other new business? Okay, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. If you'd like to make public comment, please remember that the time limit is three minutes, and you can sign in on the ledger, state your name and your address.
I'm back. Sounds good to me.
I want to put in a request for a rotating chair from this side of the table, please.
Me too. Everyone on this side, we want to spin.
We will get you an interim rotating chair.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Dietz for being so honest and letting me know that no one on this board, or at least yourself, did not know anything about this policy with regard to the benchmarks. Thank you. But apparently, no one did, not even our superintendent. But from what I hear, it was Michelle Callis. Is that, am I correct? Is that where this benchmark policy originated from? And you're mentioning her name, and you're mentioning the Curriculum Committee. So I take it that's where this benchmark policy came from?
This is not a policy.
Semantics, not a policy. This piece of paper that's in front of you, listing the 24 benchmarks, where did those thoughts come from?
As I said, this was not something that the Curriculum Committee has discussed.
You did mention it was administrative origin. Who's the administrator? You mentioned it, Mr. Ross, you said administrator. It wasn't the board, which I can understand, but you did say, you used the word administrator. Who was the administrator who came up with this? I would like to know.
The letter.
It's, yeah, it's, it says as per Michelle Callis. It's got a...
Excuse me?
The letter does say it's per Ms. Callis.
Does anyone know the answer to my question?
I can't, I'm sorry. I just said the letter does say that this is per Ms. Callis.
So it was for Ms. Callis. So our curriculum person that we hired comes up with these thoughts. It's dictated to our faculty. No one on the board knows about it, not even our superintendent. How does a major decision like this not even run by the board or the superintendent? It's going to affect every student in this district. It's going to affect practically every teacher. And nobody here knows what's going on. You weren't told, you didn't know about it. How does that happen? Somebody, please explain that to me. I know it's gonna be tough for you to explain it, but I'll give you some time.
Please continue.
What?
Please continue. Please continue your comments.
No, that was a question, I was waiting for an answer.
There's not gonna be a sufficient answer for you to this question, so please continue your comments.
Then my only other question is, I would assume that you're upset that you didn't know about this, since it's going to affect all teachers and all students. And since Mr. Ross and I appreciated your comment that you thought that 24 was rather a large number, I would assume that you would be some, to some degree, upset with this going through, with this being mandated to our teachers. Is my assumption correct?
Yes, I said as much before.
I appreciate, how about anybody else? Is anyone else upset by this? Obviously, Mr. Dietz didn't know about it, he's concerned about it. Oh, the looks on your face tell all. Don't let this happen again. Something as major as this, as this, cannot get by our board, cannot get by our superintendent. Unless, of course, it didn't get by certain people and did get by, and you're not telling the truth, then that could be possible, too. Don't let this happen again when it affects our students and our teachers. You've got to know what's going on. That's why we elected you, I think.
Thank you, Lainey.
Ellen Leebwood, 250 Grand Ave. So first of all, I want to make a comment about Greg's comments. I always make a point, I don't think I've ever gotten up here without thanking the board for their time and appreciating all that you do. I think it's really the ultimate in community service, and I very, very much appreciate it. That said, at the same time, you know, people do have questions. It doesn't mean you're not appreciated. It means we care as much as you do, and we have concerns. And there's really no reason why we shouldn't ask questions about the things we don't understand or need information about. That does not translate to, we don't think you care, or we don't respect you. I, for one, do, absolutely. And I say that every time I get up here. But I do have questions, and there's no apology for that. In fact, I would think that you'd welcome the opportunity to, you know, talk about what's happening in the district, because you're proud of it, because you're happy about the things that are going on. That hasn't happened very much. And I also want to say I appreciate, Dan, what you said. And, you know, we're very much looking forward to the actions, very much looking forward to that. Thank you for saying that. In terms of the administrative structure, I do have one suggestion, which is that maybe it's possible to rethink the three, the two assistant superintendents and the data specialist, and have, instead of replacing, I'm sorry, I'm like, it's late. We need to maybe replace an assistant superintendent, and maybe instead of doing that, that could be, the two jobs can be combined. So the data specialist and the curriculum person, because it seems to me those two are very much related. With the savings from that, having that be one position, perhaps we can get some more help at the building level, which it seems like is needed in terms of, you know, the assistant superintendent going back and forth at the middle school, high school, and that really being just too much, and it's a burnout job, and people leave, as we have seen. So with the money that's saved by combining those two top administrative jobs, maybe we can get some more help at the building level. And there was one more thing, I don't know if I could remember it right now. Oh, the only other thing is that, you know, it's sort of been, it seems like the administration has been reluctant to specifically explain the screening process from the search committee. And I gotta say, you know, whoever did the screening, and whoever does any screening, well, let me try and say it in a bit of a way. If it was me who had done that screening, I wouldn't have wanted to admit it either. Seriously, I mean, but anyway, getting back to my original point, we are gonna continue to ask questions because we really care about our community and the schools, and thank you for being board members. I really, really, deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, Ellen.
Ellen, did you ask or raise any of these concerns in the committee?
Absolutely.
And what was the response?
Well, the first question we wanted to know was, how many resumes were reviewed? And there was no answer to that.
Okay, but I'm saying, as far as the candidates, again, you know, you rated, you know, and had the consensus pick as far as, you know, who the candidate was that we were bringing forward. And did you raise concerns as far as, you know, that you didn't think that the candidates were adequate?
Yeah, as I've said in this meeting, and the previous meeting, and maybe the one before, I don't remember right now, based on the candidates that were brought forth and the information we had at the time, the three candidates we put forth were the best of the six that we interviewed. That doesn't mean they were six strong candidates by any means. I've already said, I could repeat it.
So why did you move them forward?
One was entirely, because that's what we were charged to do. The facilitator of the committee charged us with bringing forth the top three candidates. The facilitator of the committee asked us to put forth the top three candidates. That was, that's what we did, based on the information we had. Personally, I would have preferred to reopen the search. I thought, you know, three of the candidates were weak. We did what we were charged to do.
Thank you, Ellen.
Sure.
Brian Graff, 137 Hill Street. I just have a quick comment, I guess, as a follow-up to the exchange that just happened. And it's a concern that I had as I listened to your discussion around how to investigate and improve the search process for the positions here in the district. And the, so, and basically, the exchange that I just witnessed between Mr. Capone and Ellen here, and the way in which Mr. Capone reacted to Ellen's points, which quite frankly, I found to be at once defensive and fairly aggressive, really reinforced a concern that occurred to me in the proposal that was put forth by Mr. Ross, that it be Mr. Capone who convene a committee of folks who have served on these hiring committees in order to spearhead the investigation into what's wrong with the process. And that initial inclination came from the fact that, obviously, as the superintendent, Mr. Capone has been in charge of the screening, of the hiring process and how it works. And just witnessing this exchange just now reinforced to me, I felt like I witnessed what it might look like in a committee meeting convened by Mr. Capone when people tried to share their honest criticisms about the process. They would be essentially almost yelled down, and I don't think that's okay. So I would respectfully suggest that you might consider having somebody other than Mr. Capone lead the effort of putting together a process to review and improve the hiring process in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I'd like to respond to that, too. So when we go through this process, I find it hard to believe that people would make recommendations and go to the next level for people that they do not support. And so that's the question that I have, as far as, why would you submit candidates for people that you don't support? And when I'm looking at the ratings of the different people and saying that...
Please, please, please.
Saying that these are the people...
Dan, 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 this is remarkably inappropriate. This is inappropriate. This is, he is now calling in to question the integrity of community members. This is incredible.
Stop.
No, no, let him, no, Dan.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Dan, you have to stop babysitting him.
Absolutely not.
You're babysitting him. This is how he treats people.
Darcy?
This is how he treats people in this community.
It's not your time to speak right now.
This is how he treats our teachers.
Darcy?
This is how he treats me.
Darcy?
I will not stand for it anymore.
We are in public comment right now.
I will not. Look, I mean, can you just take a look at this look that I'm getting?
You need to stop. You need to stop.
I need to stop.
This is a public meeting. No, this is a public meeting.
I need to stop.
You need to stop. This conversation right now.
Our superintendent was about to take out a folder and reveal ratings that a community member gave.
Darcy, you need to stop. Okay? Right now, we are in public comment. The next public comment, can please go to the podium? And please, this is a, this is a, this is a community meeting. Have some civility, everybody. All of us. All of us. All of us.
I just want to say, I'm Darabat Finick, 348 Becker Street. I'm a part of this community, and I appreciate the right of everyone to speak up, and I love my community. And I thank everyone for listening to me about benchmarking in particular. I'm going back for a moment to benchmarking. And I just want to make you aware, I'm not writing benchmarking, but I want to make you aware that there are timeframe issues. I believe benchmarking is due July 23rd, and I believe that you might want to investigate whether other schools are also under this same schedule. I'm not privy to that, so I don't know if there are other schools that are also...
It seems like arbitrary, July 23rd is like right in the middle of the summer.
Yeah.
So it doesn't seem like a state-mandated kind of...
No, 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 I'm saying this is what teachers were told, is when their benchmarks are due. So if you're investigating the process and how many they should write, I just want you to be aware that teachers were given a timeframe.
Yeah.
As well as that there are, I believe, possibly other schools that have been given the same directive, so you can investigate that. Okay? Thank you so much.
And thank you, Dara, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We do really appreciate it.
Denise May, 314 Wayne Street. Me, Friar. Let me say that I do appreciate the work that the board does, I really do. I know that you guys stay here really late, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work you do. My criticisms are specific at the decision to hire Mr. Capone, and I specifically do not like this man. But anyway, one of my questions are, we have these, this benchmark issue that Ms. Bakbeneck brought up. Is there any plan to do any kind of revision of Ms. Callis's curriculum agenda, given that this came from her? Is that gonna be discussed in Curriculum Committee? It's just a question. Yes, no?
From an administrative standpoint, I don't know.
Okay. I've sat here, meeting after meeting, since November, or should say December, when I started attending, and I've seen nothing but this man smirk at people, show contempt for people. He is misogynistic towards Ms. Samorozdi. He is absolutely misogynistic, particularly to women who speak. I've seen him do it to Alison Salerno. I've seen him do it to Michelle McAdams and Nicola. I've seen him do it to me. I don't care if he's misogynistic to me, I couldn't care less what this guy thinks. What I really care is about the division that he has sown in our community. You promised that this man is going to give us some kind of results we want, that you want. I really hope he does. I really hope that you all succeed. I just think that when we're presented with this kind of contempt, this kind of authoritarian, you know, powers-that-be imposing my will on all you plebeians, all you peasants, I don't like it. I buckle under it. And this exchange he just had with Ellen was really contemptuous. Brian Graff, who just spoke a couple people ago, was correct. We've all sat here and witnessed this. This is why he rubs me the wrong way. I don't know about other people, this is why he rubs me the wrong way. This is why I don't like this man. Never mind about his... Never mind about his credentials. His public persona is really egregious. It's really appalling. Thank you.
Virginia Lofton, 303 South Second Avenue. It took me a while to understand the sort of, the structure of these public meetings, that we make a comment and that you don't really respond. And I think that's why people get frustrated, because we're not getting an answer back. And so it sort of feels contentious, but it really shouldn't feel that way. And so the one thing that got my attention tonight was, Mr. Ross, you said that we haven't seen, your plans haven't come to fruition yet. So whatever has been happening, it seems like there's more to come. And that makes me nervous, because we have, our town feels like it's in a crisis. People aren't speaking to each other. We have our friends that are on the school board who feel uncomfortable in their community. We have our community members who are uncomfortable around each other or who aren't, it's uncomfortable. And it's a, it's a very difficult situation. And then, of course, we have our teachers that we're all so supportive of. And they're uncomfortable and nervous and anxiety ridden. And then what Mr. Ross said, it seems like there's more to come. If the plans have not yet come to fruition, what else is happening? So what would be helpful is if there is a plan, and we don't know what it is, could you provide us with an outline? So we had some clue where you're going with what you're doing. So we had an idea of what's to come.
I will respond, because I think that the, you know, the inference is that, you know, there's more to come means that there are more major changes coming. But I don't, that's...
Because what's the plan?
Well, the plan is that this year has been spent predominantly looking at things like the curriculum and the teaching practices and trying to, you know, provide professional development for staff members, to provide resources for people, to look at technology, to do those sorts of things. From the board's perspective, that has been the process this year. There are a lot of things that are, you know, policy-related or process-related with things that the district had been doing that were being done incorrectly. A lot of those things have been corrected. We'll still continue to uncover those things as, as it goes. The, you know, this is, this is the sort of behind-the-scenes piece of this that is really the, you know, if teachers are well-supported, right? These are conditional statements, right? If teachers are well-supported, if they have curriculum, if students understand what, you know, what they're supposed to be learning, if the proper environment is set up in classrooms, then we should have successful students. However, we feel that we want to measure that aspect of it. That's the plan. I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the goal. And getting there is, is, has been very hairy. And it's, you know, it's been very difficult. And the, the, the hope is that this process becomes easier. It's not going to be an easy process, but that it becomes easier as more of these things become, you know, come into place structurally.
Like you would have been able to get to know a district before you start making major changes, though. That seems to me like it would have been a more, more effective way to do it than... It just seems such turmoil and such pain to put a community through right now. At this point, it seems really damaging.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Kringle, 147 North Seventh Avenue. I just want to talk to you guys about being board members. Not as a, you don't have to make faces, Ann. I don't want to lecture you. I just want to talk to you about...
I'm not making a face, Sharon.
I see that you're making a face, but it's okay. Because I know that you guys either look away or make faces. But basically, what I want to say, in response to your, response to the question to you all, Greg, you know, I mean, I, you know, what Ellen said is right. You know, I think that everybody in here appreciates the service to the community that a board member gives. It's a pain in the neck. It takes a lot of time. There's so much to think about. And people don't always agree with you. But I think that what people are feeling now, and the reason why someone might ask a question that comes off as rude, is that you guys have sort of forgotten what representative democracy is all about. It feels like the community has been trying to talk to you, a large segment of the community, for so long, and you are not listening. And sometimes it feels like you literally don't listen, because you know you look away, you look down, whatever. But other times, it feels like you're not listening. People are in turmoil and crisis and upset, so worried for their kids and worried for the teachers they love. And you guys just go forward with this stuff. And it's been months. And, you know, I, many people here, I've been in town for so long, I have never seen anything like this, never. And I have sat in that chair when there were hundreds of people out there who wanted us to hire somebody to be the superintendent. And the meeting went on until, I don't know, 1:30, right? In the morning, later? And then the next one? But then we all came together as a community. It has never gone on for months like this. So I just want to explain that to you, that people are not trying to be rude. People are hurting so much. That's one part. Then I want to tell you guys that sometimes you seem like you're asleep at the wheel, and that's scary. A change in the testing regime, to have all these benchmark assessments, should come through the Curriculum Committee. It should be discussed there. You guys say this all the time, and you're right. You're not supposed to be making all these decisions in a vacuum. And some decisions are for the administrators to make. But they come to you, discuss in the Curriculum Committee, hashed out completely, come to the board with a plan, before anything goes to the teachers. The reason why principals used to be presented to the board was a courtesy. So you could lay eyes on this person, and you could, you know, have a little bit of back and forth, some chit-chat. It's just the way that a, you know, that a functional, not dysfunctional, board and administration of community work. And these things have gone on for years and years and years. So we don't see that. And you seem a little asleep at the wheel, and you seem a little, I don't know. I mean, you know, you guys do get that, you know, New Jersey's changing. The fact that Christopher Surf left as commissioner, and that David Hesby is commissioner now, not the best thing in the world, but there's a real shift in New Jersey about testing. There was an enormous outcry about Park and NJAs and other things this spring. And part of it was opt-out, and part of it was about, you know, teaching to the test. And part of it was about, you know, what, how afraid people are about Park coming up. You know, you guys, you need to think about this stuff, talk about this stuff, read about this stuff, talk among yourselves, talk to us. The other thing that I want to say, two more things I want to say, about the plans coming to fruition, I don't see how that's possible. It's just all been destabilization. The teachers don't feel supported. The teachers feel adrift and upset. Families feel so anxious. I, you know, what plans coming to fruition? Thirty-one people have left since the beginning of the year. Thirty-one. Never happened in this district before. Never. It feels like leadership run amok. And the last thing I want to say is, Dan, look, you know, I'm biased, but I gotta say this anyway. You are in charge of the meeting and the table. You cannot allow the superintendent, even if he wants to, even no matter how mad we make you, but you signed up for this. You can't let him be rude to Darcy anymore or to the community. You cannot.
Back in December...
Andrew just stated...
Oh, sorry, Andrew Zappa, 131 Johnson Street. Back in December, Ms. Bull read a letter shortly after the layoffs occurred in which the board, the letter essentially said the board was going to throw itself in support of Mr. Capone. Here we are, approximately seven months later. I think it would be really important for every one of you to read that letter again and think of everything that's occurred, the performance, the gotchas that happened left and right, including tonight, his conduct here this evening. And, you know, it's okay to go back and say, I made a mistake. You can tear that letter up, each one of you personally, and say, you know what? Maybe I don't anymore. Maybe we can go out and find someone better. Darcy, I'd like to personally apologize just for being around to see that. It was deplorable. And you should really think about some counseling issues or something for the way you treat women.
Thank you, Andrew. I thought you were done talking, Julie. I thought you were done talking.
I wasn't going to talk. I will tell you that, oh, Julie Klimwitz, tomorrow is my last day of school. It's really depressing. I've had a lot of you in class, or I have your kids. And I think, or last, a president a couple of times ago, Ms. Kringle, told us, this never happened before. For me, being in this town for so long, it's embarrassing what's going on. Because it's on TV and it's all over. You are the bosses. I don't really know you, Mr. Capone. However, you ran over to see me real fast in October when I sent out an email to everybody about we should be concerned. And it's... All right? We need to be concerned, and you need to be concerned. You need to be aware of what's going on. You are the boss. All of you up here are the bosses. You need to think about what you're doing. Someone talked about turmoil. I kind of feel like you like turmoil and chaos. I don't know what it is. Maybe it's like maturity? I don't know. Moving through education and doing everything and seeing what it's like to be in a classroom and move up, I don't get it. Because this town was never like that. And it was really a wonderful place to be. But to see people in conflict, and I know people are friendly with people. So like last week, when I got my gracious words, and then I hugged Dan, people were looking at me like I was nuts. But I knew Dan before he was born, and then I had to be kind of yelling at you. You, you know what you have to do. The thing about the principal, was it last week when you came out? First thing you said was, we're not going to visit or revisit number one on the personnel. When we come to number five on there, it talks about the resignation of the Assistant Principal Middle High School. I don't see why you guys, as the board, can't say that we do not accept the resignation of Nicole Adams. I don't know what the problem is with her. She's great. She's intelligent. She's articulate. She spoke at any and everything and got up and never read off a piece of paper and knew what to say, genuinely speaking about people. I don't understand where there's a disconnect there. She really connected with Highland Park. I don't know if anyone up here has had, well, I know you guys have had, conversation with her. I don't, I'm, I'm missing something about that part. And I'm looking at every one of you, because you know how good she is. And if you don't, ask your kids. And you can ask teachers. Unless there's something about not wanting people to be happy. I happen to love my job. I was passionate about it, but, and I, and, like, I'm glad, not that I'm glad I'm going. It's my time to go, because I felt like I was saving jobs. And then another thing that really bothered me was it took forever to tell the girl, who was the phys ed teacher, she was going to be the guidance counselor. It took two months. Why play head games with people? That was totally wrong. Totally wrong. I don't get it. The turmoil, maybe there's excitement of chaos. I don't know. Do you like that? I, I don't know. You're smiling at me, but I don't get it.
Julie, I mean, we've had many conversations. And it started with the budget, and there were curriculum issues, and there was no professional development plan, and all of the things that, you know, we've kind of gone through throughout this year. And, you know, talking about fruition or what the goal was. Again, the goal for this year is trying to make sure that we have things in place so that teachers and students can be successful. And I do believe that the curriculum that we have is going to allow that to happen. And I think the professional development that's been offered this year and that will be offered moving forward will do that as well. And I think that, you know, providing common planning for teachers and providing that support, providing constant feedback through walkthroughs, I, I think all of those things make a difference. And, you know, again, when you're talking about there's been a lot of change in, it's been a short period of time. We've talked about that. I, I agree with that. And the goal is, is trying to be in a position that we can start the year, that there can be a certain amount of calm. The board has approved that we start with four professional development days to try and get everybody on the same page, to provide clarity to what it is that we're trying to accomplish.
I get that, but I'd rather leave this building, leave at the end of the year on a high note where people have schedules and know what they're going to do. Because all these people like to get their stuff together right now so they can enjoy their summer instead of getting their schedule at the very end. And even kids don't know their schedule. And that's not fair to them either. Because I've been, I, I know parents in town that last minute, you're running to say, why does my kid have that class? Let me just go into that, because I'm upset my team pep class isn't being taught anymore. And that's been in the school for years and years and years. And there's no one, no one has stepped up to say, why don't you do this and go get trained? But I, that's a whole other story. I just think that leaving school the last night or the last day, it really would have been nice to have everything in place so people know where they stand, the class they're going to teach, and then let them get together, if you're going to pay people for curriculum, so they have a clue. And the four days at the beginning of the year? I'm glad I'm not here. Because after a while, you're in overload, and you're still worrying about what you want to do in your class and what you need to do. But if you teach, you know where I'm coming from. If you don't, take a walk into the school and see what's going and ask questions and become aware of what's happening in the school. If you're not an educator, then you don't know. But if you've heard your kids talk, they can't, I mean, I don't know. If your kid's happy, that's great. It's summer. But the school year really was turmoil. Even though many of these people kept it together and supported each other, it's really sad that people have to come out to court. I mean, you're getting up tomorrow for the last day of school. But this should be a smooth thing going along throughout the year. You know, the, I, I've been here a long time. We used to have parties invite the superintendent, the principal, the vice principal, the assistant superintendent. And everybody came to our end of the year, or at my house, or whatever, because everyone got along and worked together. And I don't see why you can't find that common ground. And you guys sitting up here as the board members, you're the boss. Try and think of that. And be aware of what's going on, because it's really important. Because we look like fools when someone gets up and talks about 24 benchmarks, and nobody knows. But that was a workshop yesterday where I think we paid somebody to come to do that. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. Did we pay that person to come? You know, so, I mean, really? That, that's like out of the blue? And then when do you teach? Because you got to, all you're doing is testing. Can't we like be in the front line of saying, no, we're not going to do something that's not logical? Last week, I talked about logic, and I talked about reasoning skills. Let's find them. And make it like an end to that's good. Or maybe you have a meeting in July, and people can come and be happy when they walk out of here, that something smart happened at this meeting. I don't know. You guys have anything to say?
Thank you, Julie.
You're in the school? But that thing about Nicole Adams, I don't know what you're doing. And I don't know. I, it's beyond me that you would get rid of somebody that... Listen, Mr. Soto's here. He's wearing lots of hats. He can mentor her, he can mentor the one at the Irving School, and now he can hang out with the guy and mentor the one at the Bartle School. Oh, and you can do operations, too.
Thanks, Julie. Is there any more public comment? We need a motion to go into executive session at 6:30 PM on July 21st, 2014, at Bartle School to discuss personnel litigation and negotiations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.